Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the City of Independence, I welcome each of you in attendance, as well as those of you who are watching this meeting on City 7, to the May 14th meeting of the Independence Planning Commission. Before we begin our meeting, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who are unfamiliar with our meetings, it is a responsibility of this commission to hold public hearings and make recommendations to the Independent City Council on matters relating to zoning and land use changes within our city. We also consider and make decisions on plaits, special use permits, and other issues, as well as changes in codes and policies that relate to city planning. Our procedure for each case tonight will be as follows. First, the applicant will be recognized to speak on behalf of their case, followed by anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of that matter. Secondly, those who are in opposition or who have questions regarding the case will then be recognized to speak. Then if there was opposition or questions from the public, the applicant will be allowed a rebuttal, period, or an answer, period, to address those concerns or questions. And once the applicant is finished, the Chair will declare the public hearing portion of that case closed, and further comment from the public will not be recognized. At that point, the commissioners will have the opportunity to discuss the case with one another, and during that discussion, the commission reserves the right to ask questions of all parties concerned. And then finally, we will render a decision in the case. Because this is the only public hearing of the cases on the agenda tonight, all those who wish to speak will be heard. All comments and questions from the public should be addressed to the Chair, and not directly to the applicant or directly to the staff. The Chair also requests that statements be kept brief and on point, and that if a statement has been previously made by a previous speaker, please do not repeat it, but if you wish, please just stand and indicate your agreement on the matter as well. Now, to expedite tonight's meeting, the Chair asks that everyone who wishes to testify or who thinks that they may wish to testify during our discussion, please stand now and be sworn in. Those standing, please raise your right hand. Yeah, if you think you might, you might as well just go ahead and do it, there's no penalty involved. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, please answer, "I do." Thank you very much, you may be seated. Okay, our first item on our agenda is first decide to decide if we're going to follow the suggested agenda from Stewart.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
In a matter of modifying the agenda for today, propose the first two cases listed are the same, then the short-term rental is moved up to third, then the three items for Cogan Lane should be heard or slash discussed together, but voted on separately. And then, the final case, the changes to the city code be considered last.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Okay. Stewart, before we take the vote, because my email doesn't want to pull up, could you tell us again the order, like, you know, five is going to one, or...
Okay, so, number one and number two are the same, and then number three would be the short-term rental would move up into to follow the rezoning for 23rd Street. And then number four, the three cases on Cogan Lane, which are all related. And then the last one would be the UDO amendment.
Okay, so three goes to five, and then four and five move up?
That's right.
All right. So if you're following along on your bulletin or your agenda, whatever you want to call it, one, it's gonna go one, two, four, five, three. Because we're gonna be nice to you folks, because I don't know that you want to sit through our discussion of a UDO amendment. Okay, so, the first item we have is a consent agenda for number, case number 19-320-02, final plat, Ansley Apartments, first plat.
Is there a motion to...
Yeah, motion.
...approve the consent agenda?
Is there a motion to approve this consent agenda?
I move to approve that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we're ready for the vote.
Okay. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Let's see, who's here? Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
And Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. The consent agenda is...
What about me? What about me?
Oh, Wiley. And Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Present.
Hashtag me too. Okay, well, it passed. So the next case on our agenda is case number 19-100-04, rezoning of 106 East 23rd Street.
Yeah, if the commission can remember at its last meeting on April 23rd, it voted to continue this case to this meeting in order the applicant could meet with city staff to discuss issues relating to whether the proposed zoning classification for the site should be either C2 or C3. Staff did meet with the applicant, and at the meeting, zoning district options were discussed, and the land uses and activities permitted in each district was also discussed. Some of the primary issues included no outdoor storage of vehicles and/or equipment, including hauling trailers, mowing equipment, and related business equipment. The equipment must be kept inside the building or stored off-site. However, the standard pickup trucks, three-quarter ton or less, may be parked or stored outside or inside the property. And during the discussions, he indicated that he would be working to put the trailers and the equipment inside the building. He's also talked about potentially building another building, or just cutting additional garage doors in that long wall that's on that side. I can show you, I didn't bring up the thing, but here I can... Okay, as you see, the, that's the front, and this is the side, you can see the side along there behind the fence line, that he would be cutting holes in the wall potentially to put more trailers in the building, or he could work with the existing garage door that goes into the building. And then the second was, any areas of the property where vehicles were parked, stored, or used for a driving surface must be paved. This would include any area behind the fence which needs to be at least partially paved. He is aware of that. And then the storage of gravel, wood chips, mulch, decorative stone, and related material can be kept behind the fenced areas. He does have out along the road a little display area, but these are mostly floor materials that he doesn't use on the site when he's there, just like leftovers and things. He indicated that he doesn't really have people that come there such, you know, they don't come there to buy a wheelbarrow of wood chips or whatever, that's just something that he takes to the site. And I think that after our discussion, the applicant indicated he had better understanding of the strictness of each zoning district, and indicated that he could beat the C2 standards and is comfortable with that in lieu of the C3 zoning classification. And staff does recommend approval of the C2 zoning. And he is here to answer any questions if you wanted him to, or to make another presentation if you'd like.
Yeah, Mr. Ariola, could you please come forward? I think unless one of the commissioners wants to disagree with me, we understand what you want to do, and I just want to hear you publicly say for the record that you understand that this is gonna be C2 and that you're okay with that.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions of Mr. Ariola? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else here in the, that wishes to speak in favor of this case? Okay, is there anyone else here who has questions or is opposed? All right, seeing no movement in the crowd, we will declare that public hearing portion of this case is closed, and we'll entertain questions or a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In the matter of case number 19-100-04, rezoning at 1026 East 23rd Street, from R12 to family residential to C2 general commercial, be approved.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. This case would move to the City Council?
That's right, in about three weeks. I'll get with the applicant to make sure he knows when that is.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir, and good luck to you. Okay, our next case, this case number 19-100-05, rezoning of 15804 East Cogan Lane and a portion of 15801 and 15803 US 24 Highway.
You've done the...
Well, okay. Sorry, I misunderstood you. Okay, so, let me correct myself, that's case number 19-400-02, short-term rental at 210 North Union Street. The city give their report, please.
Amanda Tilton intends to operate a short-term rental from a recently renovated home at 210 North Union Street. The case, the city's first short-term rental application, had actually been scheduled for our April 23 planning commission meeting, but due to a notification error by city staff, it's being heard today. So we're beginning with the first slide here, it's a vicinity map showing the location on Union between Maple and Truman Road. The property is zoned R6, single-family residential. Surrounding properties are zoned R6, single-family residential to the north and the west. There's owned R30, PUD, moderate-density residential plan unit development to the northeast, and C2 general commercial areas to the south and southeast. This is the vicinity map, aerial photo. Notice north and to the west, property, mostly single-family homes. You've got rental units up to the northeast. You've got a legal non-conforming, a single-family home that's in a commercially zone area to the east there, and then a insurance agency lying directly to the, to the south. The house is a 1,700 square foot residence with three bedrooms, one bathroom, two living spaces, and kitchen dining. The applicant will be able to accommodate eight guests in three bedrooms and a sofa bed. Note in your packet the pictures provided by the applicant of the interior there in the different rooms. There will be two parking spaces on the site off the alley where the garage is there behind the house. In addition, as allowed by the UDO, you've got two spaces on the street, as well as the additional parking that will be allowed by the insurance agents on, agency on their parking lot to the south. This drawing shows the notification area within 185 feet of the property that received notification in the mail. Whoop. Okay. So real quickly, I'll go within, through the pictures here, this is looking directly west across Union at the property. You can see the insurance agency to the south. This is the alley that borders on the north side of the house. This is to the northeast, you can see the multifamily there. And this is the, the home that's on the commercially zone lot, the large historic home. This is looking south down Union at the old school there on Maple, and looking southwest at the insurance company office. Staff recommends approval of the short-term rental subject to the following conditions. The short-term rentals shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article 3, Chapter 5 of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. Number two, the short-term rentals shall secure refuge collection from a collector who is a licensed, licensed to operate in the City of Independence. And three, the short-term rentals shall provide the safety requirements outlined in Section 14, 420 of the code. And if you have any additional questions, I'm ready to take them.
I have one. There's no analysis attached to this project that I can see. You know what I mean?
What do you mean, analysis?
Analysis, the regular questions that are asked about the impact...
Yeah, that's, basically, we use the format of a staff report that we did for the home business, 'cause it's, it's, it's like a home business, but it's not. But it's not...
I bet neither of us, there's no...
It's not a rezoning of the property, so there's no analysis that relates to that, nor is it a plat. So it's, it is essentially a home business, and we have not provided analysis because there's none in the zoning ordinance that discusses this issue, lists this issue.
Get me with my, get my brain wrapped around this. This is, this property is not the residence...
No.
...of the property owner.
If it was a standard home business and they were doing something like this, it'd be a bed and breakfast, essentially.
Right.
That's not what this is. This is a different application, although it's a, it's a variation of, of a home business.
So redefine what a short-term rental is. In the code, what's a short-term rental?
The conditions in the code that I was about ready to read, you know, break it out, is two different kinds of things, but it's covered under the same section. A short-term rental, this is the definition in the code. A single-family or two-family dwelling unit managed by the property owner or a property management company for short-term lodging. A short-term rental shall contain four or fewer guest rooms for occupancy to ten or few, fewer total occupants with no more than two adults per bedroom, in which meals shall not be provided to guests. The dwelling unit in a short-term rental shall be rented in its entirety and shall not be, let's see, shall be rented in its entirety, and individual rooms shall not be rented to separate parties during the same period of time. For the purposes of this term, a guest is a person who rents a room in a short-term rental establishment for no more than thirty consecutive days.
So, do I understand, if we put that in other language, that... There's, there's not, I believe you said there was eight rooms?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, no, eight, they could have eight guests, they have three rooms.
Eight guests.
They have three bedrooms, and then they have a sofa sleeper in a living space that can sleep two people.
Okay.
Right.
All right, so, in this, this is not three separate rentals, this is one rental?
Yes.
With up to eight guests in it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the current zoning of this property is...
R6, single-family residential.
R6, single-family residential. Is this equivalent to what Airbnb does?
That's the idea.
Is substantially, whether that's, that's a platform used or not?
Right.
Okay.
My only other question before we hear from the applicant, at least my only other question, is parking. Is there a driveway?
Well, I, I mentioned there's two off-street parking places in that garage that's off the alley. They can, they have two spaces available to them in the street, and then the, the parking lot of the property to the south is being made available to them for additional parking if need be.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have questions of staff before we...
How does this, in that the property owner is not a resident, and traditionally, at least in my brain, these type platforms are used where the property owner is resident? And in this case, the property owner is not in residence, but it is solely occupied by tenants, short-term.
For Airbnbs, that's not necessarily true. Sometimes they just renovate and do.
But isn't that, okay.
And so the, the code is...
We can do that in residential zoning, and not commercial.
The code isn't making the distinction among, between the platforms, it's making the distinction between a home business, bed and breakfast...
Right.
...and a short-term rental, which is a different animal.
Okay. Questions?
So, they're not applying for a home-based business. This was the email I sent this week. It's, those are, the license they're applying for is essentially not a home-based business license, it's different. Because they don't live...
We've had conflating terminology, but it's, it, the way, the code, this is carved out in the code.
Right.
That's specifically allowed in, in residential areas that doesn't necessarily have the resident living.
Got it.
Okay, well, let's have the applicant come forward, please. And make sure you state your name and address for the record.
Afternoon, my name is Trevor Tilton, and we are at 210 North Union. That is the property at question.
Yeah, okay. Do you, just aside, you intend to, you still be residing in Independence or close by?
Sorry, folks. No, we actually live in Odessa. We do reside, we're staying there at the Airbnb tonight. You know, it's been less frequent that we stay here, we usually will stay here two to three nights a week, 'cause my, it's actually my insurance office. And my wife and I, Amanda, own Square One Homes together, and this is in the business of Square One Homes. But it's been rented out so often now that we only stay up here every now and again.
Okay, so, so you've been using it as this, and you're just trying to comply with the code, is that...
Okay, so, we started this project, and we were made aware that there was a brand-new ordinance that the city started when we were basically done and had it listed. Now, we were the first ones to comply, there's over, there's currently over 1,000 operating Airbnbs in Independence right now. We are the first ones that are making the switch to become legal. We are making the, an effort to do so. It's been kind of hard, because, you know, it's brand-new, so, city staff, and it, I tried, I've been going down this road a long time. As soon as I found out about it, I went in there, and, you know, it, we didn't figure it out that day, but I'd come back, and we've got it figured out now, I guess. And then, like I said, the mailing issue, they didn't get it mailed out to make the first date, but we have this date now, so, that's, and we have, we've continued to rent out, yes, to answer your question.
Okay, well, we appreciate you trying to comply with the code. Is there any, is there anything else you think we should know?
Yes, this has been kind of a, when I bought the house, or when we bought the house, it was an eyesore, it, we bought it for the sole purpose that it was behind my office, and I hated looking at it. My friends told me that we were crazy and that we should have torn it down, there was homeless living in the basement. We saw all sorts of unspeakable things at this house, so, we bought it, and we spent all the money fixing it up. We've invested over $70,000 in renovation, just in this house. We were entertaining the idea of using it as my wife's real estate office, but it just didn't make sense, and I didn't want to rent it out to anyone on a year lease, because I like it.
Yeah.
And so we wanted to have the option to stay here, and we thought, what a great way to benefit the square, you know, I'm involved in the square association, and trying to bring tourists here to the square. And we have had guests from the east coast, we've had guests from the west coast, just about everywhere. We've, so far, we've had 13 stays, and I think we started in March, March 14th was our, our first stay, and we are booked out for four months. I mean, we, and we have booklets made inside that send our guests to all the Truman sites, all the square businesses, all the Inglewood businesses. We are, we like to think that we are really helping with tourism dollars, and really giving the city a good image. We have had no complaints, and we are qualified for a Airbnb super host. So, we're very happy with the way things have been going, and we're very excited to hopefully be the first legitimate Airbnb in Independence. So, I thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions of the applicant?
Maybe if you could just go over that your parking again?
Sure.
So we hear it from you and not the city.
Okay. We have parking in the back toward, in that detached garage there. We have parking there, but most of the people park in my parking lot, which adjoins the park, and we will, we are getting separate signs made that say, reserved for guests of the... And we will, we are getting separate signs made that say, reserved for guests of the uptown house. But there's plenty of parking for them there and then they have the on-street parking as well.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, you may be seated.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone else who is opposed or who has questions? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public portion of this case.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before making motion to approve this operation, I, I simply applaud this blessing to the city and what it does for, not only the city, but for the property owners where the opportunity to have this inflow of capital and where properties are improved. It's a win-win for everybody. And it certainly invites, uh, peop- visitors to the city and give them that personal touch. So, with that stated, I, I recommend, uh, that in a matter of case number one-nine dash four-zero-zero dash zero-two, short-term rental at two-ten North Union Street, operated by Square One Homes LLC, be approved to operate a short-term rental at said location.
I second the recommendations.
With the stated conditions.
You second it with the stated conditions?
I second that also.
Okay, thank you. Alright, unless there's no other discussion, I think we're ready to take the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number one-nine dash four-hundred dash zero-two, short-term rental at two-ten North Union Street has been approved. And, uh, good luck to you. Maybe you could start a little class, since there's a thousand of these in here, on how to do this and make a little extra money. Think about it.
Get our own Joanna.
And really, we do.
Congratulations.
Yes, we really appreciate you folks, uh, stepping out into the wild here and taking this on, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so... Alright, Stuart, what's next?
I'd help, but I'm no help.
Alright, Stuart, which one's next?
Dan Wilson, Dan Wilson.
Okay. And did you suggest that we were gonna move those together into one, one item? On separately, okay. Alright, the next case is case number one-nine dash one-hundred dash zero-five, rezoning of one-five-eight-zero-four East Cogan Lane and a portion of one-five-eight-zero-one and one-five-eight-zero-three East US twenty-four Highway. And we're also gonna discuss together with case number one-nine dash three-ten dash zero-two, preliminary plat of Wilson Heights.
Okay, you're on.
HDMI, I'm deserving it home. I hate that. Unplug it, plug it back in. That's what he needs to do. It's off everything.
There's the concession stand.
Yeah.
Get a beverage.
Give me, give me one second, I think I-
Okay. Did you try turning it off and turning it back on?
No.
Yep.
I thought Cogan Lane was the, where it speaks later. Isn't that a Cogan something?
Oh, I don't know, is it?
Yeah, I'm saying, what the hell's going on here? It's ruining the neighborhood.
He just wants all our neighbors. He just wants all the neighbors.
Do you think there's three commercial lots and six? Did you?
Cogan Lane, sounds like a song.
Yeah.
Yeah, Cogan Lane.
Cogan Lane. Cogan Lane.
Okay. Is that the part?
Yep. I think we'll be okay.
I think there's just six. I think there's just six.
Okay, uh, Dan Wilson, representing Wilson Homes and Construction, Inc., requests to rezone, uh, one-five-eight-zero-four East Cogan Lane and one-five-eight-zero-three East US twenty-four Highway from R six, single-family residential, R eighteen PUD, moderate-density residential plan, unit development, and C two general commercial to R six, single-family residential and C three service commercial, and requests preliminary and final approval for the same properties. Yeah, plat approval. Okay, so, if you, from your packets, um, basically talking about those two large tracks, you'll notice in your, on your revised drawings, um, it does not include that auto repair, um, like the original, drawing and staff report did. It's just the two large tracks that, that are away from the intersection. Okay, and, uh, because of that, um, there's actually fewer lots, there's going to be, um, eight instead of ten, okay? The one that was, um, a flag lot that was gonna have Cogan access, um, that one commercial lot, no longer has that access and it was combined with the lot to the north. So, there's one large commercial lot and seven residential lots. Okay, so, um, just, um, speaking about the area, um, this is surrounded by a lot of, uh, C two general commercial zoning along the corridor to the north as well as to the, uh, west. Of course, the auto repair, uh, location on the corner of Cogan and US twenty-four, um, is zone C two as well. And then you have, um, R six with the existing residences that lie south of, um, Cogan Lane, across the street from the proposed development as well as, um, um, R six on the north side of Cogan farther down to the east. In the vicinity, of course, you have a retail hardware store to the north. You ha- again, you have to the east and south, single-family homes. To the west, it's a mix of different commercial uses, uh, uh, auto repair, animal groomer, uh, used car sales, and as well some residences that are zoned C two as everything along that corridor, twenty-four highway corridor, um, generally is. The applicant intends to rezone and replat, uh, the two tracks of land into an eight-lot subdivision consisting of a commercial lot and then the seven residential lots. Again, lot eight will be that vacant north lot and the northwestern portion of the track behind the, um, uh, auto repair, um, store that presently has a gutted house on the property, uh, that, um, would be removed eventually. The applicant requests that that lot be zoned C three to permit outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment. The remainder of the lots would be down-zoned, uh, to, um, R six and, uh, the six of them are approximately six, uh, ten thousand, three hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, the number seven on the east that wraps around, uh, to the north side behind the other residential lots, frontages would be forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty, uh, feet. Again, all of these, uh, properties would have driveways and frontages to Cogan Lane. Uh, the area of rezoning abuts, uh, two rights of ways, um, and plating, abuts two rights of ways, the US twenty-four highway corridor and Cogan Lane. Of course, uh, twenty-four highway is a MODOT highway and currently already has a sidewalk on it. Public Works is going to require half-street improvements and sidewalks along the north side of Cogan, the Cogan Lane right-of-way. The commercial property is responsible for its own onsite detention. However, the residential lots, uh, will, uh, drain to, uh, much of their detention or runoff anyway, will drain to a detention basin located on lot seven. Uh, this will require an easement with a notation on the plat that the owner of lot seven will be required to maintain that basin. I would go through our video tour, but I can't picture tour the neighborhood, but I can't do that for you, so I'll go straight, uh, to our recommendation. Uh, staff recommends approval of the rezoning, uh, portion of this application. We also recommend approval of both the preliminary and final plats with the following conditions. On both the preliminary and the final plat, we need a condition that states, show the proposed East Cogan Lane and East, uh, US twenty-four, and the existing US twenty-four sidewalks on the plat. And then just for the final plat, we need to include that, uh, recommendation as well as a, um, uh, house cleaning issue of cleaning up the approval language, uh, for a, uh, approval of a final plat, approved by the city council and the mayor of the city of Independence, Missouri on this blank day of, blank year. And then, uh, the last item, uh, create a drainage easement, uh, for the drainage basin with a notation on the final plat that the, that the owner of lot seven will maintain that basin.
And that basin is to serve all these properties, or the ones to the north, or?
All the residential, although, uh, a, a good portion of, talking to, uh, Public Works this afternoon, a good portion, particularly stuff on the driveway and whatnot, may actually end up in the street gutter as well, so. But particularly the lots on the end will, will drain to lot seven.
Okay. Does anyone have questions of staff before we call the applicant forward?
That basin is in lot seven?
Yes.
Did you recommend a spot like?
Well, the, the preliminary plat shows the spot. It's actually on the preliminary plat.
Not that it's a big deal, but it shows it in what is now lot eight. And not lot seven, but you're saying it's there, but lot seven's supposed to be-
On the revised drawing, it should say, it should be lot seven.
And the revised drawing is the-
On the east.
Final plat?
The, the revised are the ones that I left on your, on the dais for today.
I got this one, replat B and final plat.
Right.
So, it's on replat B, right? Which shows it right here.
No, well, that's the one on, uh, commercial lot, there's another one, down by Cogan. The, on the, the frontage of lot seven.
Oh, down in the, uh, south.
It's on the, it's on the preliminary of the frontage of lot seven.
Gotcha. So, the, so the access to Cogan Road will be between that storm basin and the, uh,
And the property line.
Lot six.
And they would build the house back behind the property there.
Is it, the access is gonna be between the existing lot or the future lot six? Which side of the basin, is it gonna be on east or west? Do you wanna look at my thing?
I, I guess I'm not understanding what you're asking.
I think he was talking about the location of that basin, which is seemed to be in the southwest corner of-
It's, it's the southwest corner, it says future storm water management system or basin. At the southwest corner of the replat.
And my question was?
Southeast, I mean.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be street access to Cogan Road for the house. My question was, what side of the basin is it gonna be on?
On the left side, that's, this is a sixty-five foot wide lot.
Okay, so, so the west-
A driveway, a driveway is what, twelve feet?
The west, the west side.
Yeah, on the west side, yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, Mr. Wilson, could you come forward or? And of course, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Chair, members, Dan Wilson, thirteen-twenty Lee Summit Road, Independence, Missouri. We own, uh, started this new company, Wilson Homes, me and my wife. And, um, I've got quite a bit of history with this piece of property. I lived, um, across the street from this forty years ago. So, this property, I know quite a bit about it. This property's been vacant for the forty-some years that I know. Nothing has been on, I think the Moonlight Motel was the last thing. And, um, it's the same growed-up, the same trees, the same mess that it's been for the forty years that I've known it. So, we're just, um, ready to help the community and ourselves out with this thing and, um, get some new buildings put on there, some new houses and, uh, just get this thing cleaned up and try to get rid of some of the problems that are there. The old house, um, has been vacant for some time and it's had everything in it. It's, we've had to run a lot of things out of there. And we're trying to get the, uh, trees, the brush cleaned up, everything right now. And I guess, um, I can just start out with this, let me just start with the commercial property. We're going to, um, be building approximately a twenty thousand square foot building on twenty-four highway. It is going to be, can, three units will be- It is going to be, three units will be rental and it is going to be in the automobile industry service area. And there are going to be several overhead doors. It's going to be a nice building, similar to buildings that you've seen we've built on 24 Highway. I guess we're going to go into there. We're going to be putting in the water detention, storm sewers, the, or not storm sewers, the water detention, the curb and gutter on 24 Highway, new sidewalk throughout. Of course, we'll conform to when we get ready for the building, any landscaping, parking, whatever needs to be done at that point. And we'll move on down, I guess, to Cogan. Also on the commercial, we're going to have, of course, a privacy fence between all of commercial and residential with a 12-foot wide buffer on everything. Of course, all the water detention for commercial will be separated from residential. And we'll make sure there's berms there that nothing goes that direction. And we'll move on down, I guess, to the commercial that we have, or the residential. And we're going to remove and demo the old house that's there now. I guess that's actually on part of the commercial, but it's going to be demoed. Then we go on down and we're going to have, like you said, the seven lots. And we're going to have houses on those that range from 1,600 to 1,900 square foot with full basements, nice homes. And we're going to have, of course, some half-street improvements, which will be new curbs and sidewalks in front of the houses. And of course, with that, as we're building new landscaping, new trees. And of course, the, we've already talked about, the water detention is going to be on Lot 7. And the answer to your question on the driveway, I believe it's going to be on the right side of the detention as you're pulling into the, into the driveway. I'm going to be, the drive will be up against the existing property.
Okay.
I believe is the way we're going to do it now.
Okay.
And of course, there again, we're putting on the ownership of title also here of the upkeep on the detention basin for Lot 7. And we're doing that so that we don't have to have a homes association on just seven lots.
Sure.
And I think we can get the thing taken care of better with that homeowner than we can when the home association goes away and nobody takes care of it anymore.
Okay.
And I believe that's it for me.
So this little, this little piece of Lot 8 that's going to back up to Lots 1, 2, and 3, that's going to be, you want that zone C3 for storage?
Yes.
Okay. And, I mean, hence the fence and the buffer and all that. Will that storage be, since Lot 8 is going to have, what, three or four separate businesses in that building that you're putting up?
Not exactly sure how that's going to conform just yet, but at least three. And my intentions are, as time goes on here, we're going to add some buildings, maybe downhill of that, another one or so.
Okay, so there'd be, you're going to probably face those, those commercial buildings north and south or are you going to orient more towards 24 Highway?
We've just tentatively started on that. So it's going to be facing 24 and running lengthways along that property line.
So, and I'm sorry, I just have to ask a quick question of Stuart. So one C3 and the other one C2?
No, they?
It's all C3?
It's all C3 now because the lots are now one lot and you can't have two zonings on one lot, so it's requested for the whole thing to be C3.
So storage could happen on the entire lot now?
Theoretically, it could, yes.
But if you store something that fronts 24 Highway, do you have to?
Well, it'd have to be behind the building, first of all, whatever the structure is.
Okay.
And then it would have to be behind a screen fence.
Okay, and the fence, what type of fence is it supposed to be? Does it, is it spelled out?
A solid fence.
So it could be any type of solid fence?
It could be vinyl, it could be wood, but it would have to be a solid opaque fence.
So chain link with strips in it?
No.
No.
No chain link.
Okay, I just asked. Right, do you have anything else to add, Mr. Wilson?
No, this storage is going to be to the far back of the property. And what that's going to be is anything that's, that stays, you know, in the commercial, if somebody needs to pull a motor out of a car, you know, and they're waiting for the new one, that goes back behind the screen storage instead of setting out in front of the building like you see so many on 24 Highway right now. Try to clean that up.
Sure, and that's very much appreciated. And just, not that I think you're going to do this, sir, but just for my edification, that couldn't be part of a tow lot then, could it?
No.
Well, we hope not because we are full up on tow lots.
Yeah.
We have as many, we have a maximum of 10 and I think we have 11. So it could not operate as any tow facility, either a tow lot or a tow service.
If, like, you know, 20, 30 years, I know you're going to live longer than this, but, you know, if something should happen to Mr. Wilson here, does C3 allow that? If there's, like, the, the number falls below the 10 maximum?
Well, I believe there's a special use permit required for it, so.
Good, thank you.
I think.
All right, any other questions?
We don't need any more tow lots?
No.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard you say how big these houses are going to be. What were the square feet of?
They're going to range from 1,600 to 1,900, finished on the first floor.
Okay, and these lots are 10,350 square feet. So that, what, leaves about 70 square feet in front of each house?
There is 70 square, running feet in front of each lot.
And so they're long, narrow?
Yes, they're going to be nice, long lots. If you're familiar, I don't know, if you've seen the new houses we're building on Salisbury.
Yes.
And when you get in the back of those, those are nice, deep lots also. They're really turning out nice. And it makes a nice backyard, and these are longer than those.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, do you have anything else you want to add before?
Think I'm good.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this case? Is there anyone here who is opposed or who has questions? All right. Yes. Just make sure you state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kim Gruner. I live at 16101 East Cogan Lane. And I came to learn. I wanted to see the pictures. And I didn't get to see those, so I'd like to see those.
Sorry.
And I guess another question I would have is about the, is the city water and sewer? We just got on to that just in the past few years. So how is that affected with what's already been added to that, the place?
Okay, we'll find out about that. Is there anything else?
That's her.
You probably are welcome to look at his screen and see the pictures.
Thanks. I don't want to hold up anything. That was my question.
That's why we're here.
Thanks.
So is there city, can Stuart answer that or not? Stuart?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Her question was about the city sewer and if these are going to be hooked up to that.
They would have to be. Yeah, there's not square footage for septic and the, the presence of sewer lines require that you hook up to them, so.
Okay. All right, that, okay. Is there anyone else here who has a question? All right, and I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion of this hearing and ask for any comments or motions from my fellow commissioners.
I don't have any.
Nobody?
Ready for a motion?
You're going to have to do three motions, three votes.
We're going, but we'll do them one at a time.
Right.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
Yes, I would entertain a motion.
In the matter of case number 19-100-05 rezoning at 15804 East Cogan Lane and a portion of 15801 and 15803 East US Highway be rezoned to R6 Single Family Residential, C, well, I should say, from the single family?
If I could just note something?
Yeah, to R6 Single Family Residential, C2 General Commercial, and C3 Service Commercial.
If I could just note something, that portion in the revision was deleted. So the partial address is not part of the rezoning.
Okay. So modify it.
Just C3, no C2?
C2.
C2 and R6, and that's it?
And R6, not C3.
No, well, no, C3 and R6, no C2.
Oh, okay. Then the motion is modified to R6 Single Family Residential and C3 Service Commercial.
I second that.
You want to explain it to me?
I do. Yeah, it's right there.
Right there. Well, it's, sure, it's been motioned and seconded. Let's go ahead and take a vote on it.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number 19-100-05 rezoning of all those properties that were mentioned has been approved. Now we need to take a second vote, correct?
Yes, for the preliminary plat.
Okay. So do I have, do I have a motion for case number 19-310-02 preliminary plat?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve case 19-320-02 final plat. That's the wrong one, right?
No, that's right.
No.
It's this one, sorry. Who was the wrong one? Case 19-310-02 preliminary plat for Wilson Heights be approved.
Thank you to have a second.
Actually, it's not Wilson Heights, sorry. It's a Cogan Place replat B.
Okay.
So noted.
That. I second.
Thank you, Heather. You, you guys have totally conceded and confusing us, but I think we're doing the right thing, so.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number 19-310-02 preliminary plat for Cogan Place replat B has been approved. Good luck to you, sir. Thank you.
You have one more?
We have one more. Well, I, hold those congratulations, please. So now we got 1932003 final plat. Is this Wilson Heights or does it have a different name?
It's, it's Cogan Place replat B.
Cogan Place replat B, okay.
That is not what I have written down here, just so we all know.
Well, would somebody like to move this?
This one right here. Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number 19-320-03 final plat for?
Cogan Place replat B.
Plan B.
Plat.
Plat B.
Replat B.
Be approved.
I second.
Put us out of our misery and let's have the vote, please.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes, case number 19-320-03 final plat, Cogan Place replat B has been approved. Now congratulations are to you, sir, and thank you and continue the good work that you have been doing, sir. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Good luck. When will it be, I mean, what's the timeline?
You'll have a good neighbor there to the, at the corner there of Cogan and 24. Take my word for that. R and K.
All right.
All right.
Holy moly. Congratulations to us for getting that wrong.
So now we're doing? No, what do we do? The marijuana?
We need the mari, we need the marijuana.
We need that one. Where is that one? There it is. So we're not doing this one?
Thank you.
We've already done it. Wait, yeah, it was, it was on the, it was the first one we did.
Mr. Chair, will, will the presenter stipulate his background and any collegiate activities that would support his presentation?
How much research have you done?
There are just jokes abound.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't, you know, John Mayfield, City Manager's Office, former Missouri State Representative, ordained Baptist minister, so here we go. It was only fair that I'd be named the medical marijuana, unofficial medical marijuana czar by the city manager, so. Just briefly, I just want to give you a little bit of overview because this is a new industry in the state of Missouri and then kind of go through the proposed amendment and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. November 6, 2018, the voters of Missouri approved Amendment 2 to Article 16 of the Missouri Constitution, which legalizes medical marijuana in Missouri. It provided for deadlines for certain actions to incur, including putting in place rules that regulate all facets of medical marijuana. The first deadline is June 4, 2019. As you may know, on February 19 of this year, the Independent City Council adopted an administrative delay until August 3, 2019. And it was enacted to give staff time to actively research issues related to medical marijuana because this is a new industry in our state as well as our city. And since the beginning of the year, I have chaired a working group of city staff composed of different departments to look at this issue. Some of us have attended different conferences on this topic, including two conferences hosted by the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services and one hosted by the Mid-America Regional Council. Obviously, the UDO did not provide regulations to allow for the sale, cultivation, and distribution of medical marijuana because it was previously illegal. We needed time to ensure fairness to all potential applicants by halting any new applications or approvals until such time as regulations are in place. Amendment 2 calls for the state to accept applications for medical marijuana beginning in August 3, 2019 through August 17, 2019. They must make final decisions by December 31 of this year. The draft rules of the Department of Health and Senior Services require them to give a, to give them a proposed address of the location of the facility and also, as a very minimum, a map of the location showing that the proposed site meets local zoning requirements. The amendment states that local governments may enact ordinances or regulations that govern the time, place, and manner of operations of a medical marijuana facility. And it says also that local governments cannot be quote-unquote "unduly burdensome" in their jurisdictions. In order to ensure that we're not being unduly burdensome, staff is bringing forward this UDO amendment this evening to allow potential applicants to find a location that meets our zoning requirements. And just a little more background, then we'll get into the amendment itself. Under Amendment 2, there will be 24 medical marijuana dispensaries in each congressional district, there are eight congressional districts in the state of Missouri. So the 5th congressional where we are right now would get 24 and there would? fifth congressional where we are right now, I would get twenty-four, and there would be a hundred ninety-two total dispensaries in the state of Missouri. There will also be sixty licenses for cultivation facilities, and eighty-six licenses for marijuana-infused products, and that is the entire state, that's not per congressional district. Uh, as of April twenty-fifth, there had been sixty-nine pre-applications filed with the Department of Health and Senior Services, which basically means they collected the fee. Uh, they will actually be accepting the, the full applications beginning August third.
For just independents?
No, no, no. They accept the application, they're accepting checks from everybody. They're not discriminating. It's, it's a lot to take in, so if I, if it's unclear, anything's unclear, please let me know. So, what we have before you tonight are we are defining, um, the different medical want, uh, entities, medical marijuana cultivation facility, medical marijuana dispensary facility, a medical marijuana facility, medical marijuana infused products, manufacturing facility, and medical marijuana testing facility, the section fourteen dash two oh one, and these definitions are all based on the state guidelines. Uh, the other changes including, include updating the office, commercial, and industrial use tables to include the medical marijuana uses. The medical marijuana dispensaries are a retail outlet, and as such, those uses would be allowed in the C two and C three districts where other retail uses are allowed. Uh, medical marijuana testing facilities are similar to office-type uses, and as such would be allowed in the C two, C three, BP, and I one districts where other office uses would be allowed. And then finally, the medical marijuana cultivation facility and infused products manufacturing are similar to a manufacturing-type use, and as such would be allowed in the C three and I one districts. And then the last change includes adding a new section fourteen dash four two one, which outlines the various conditions to be met for medical marijuana facilities. Uh, one of the highlights of that is what the amendment calls for, uh, no medical marijuana business located within a thousand feet of an existing elementary or secondary school, licensed childcare center, or religious assembly. And it talks about how the thousand feet will be measured, because that was a hot topic among planners and among people at the different meetings I went to. Uh, also, uh, hours of operation, uh, we have it down here, that no sales or distribution marijuana shall occur upon the premises or by delivery from the premises between the hours of ten PM and eight AM. So they have to be open between eight AM and ten PM, basically. This is kind of it in a nutshell. Staff recommends approval of the adoption of the proposed amendment number thirty-eight to the Unified Development Ordinance. I should say, I'm pinch hitting for Tom Skinnell, Community Development Director. Uh, he was not able to be here tonight, so he sort of deputized me, he thought I had enough credentials to present this to this august body, so. Uh, and then there's also proposed, there's a map also in your packet that shows where, under this amendment, where the, the different medical marijuana facilities could be located, because they are more than a thousand feet, a thousand feet or more within those entities I described before. So I think that concludes my remarks, I'd be happy to take any questions if I can, or what you'd like to do at this point. I can see I really kept this audience here tonight.
Just a quick question.
Uh-huh.
How did they make this map up? Is it based on, uh?
It is.
Previous applicant?
No, what that map shows is the, the places that were within a thousand feet of a church, daycare, or, uh, based on the different zoning that we have proposed.
Okay.
And Mr. Skinnell made up that map, so I can't speak too much more to it than that, but that's my understanding of the map.
Okay.
Does the UDO specify how many independents is going to have?
That is all regulated by the state. The only thing that the city is allowed to do is regulate the time, place, and manner of operation. All other decisions are made by the Department of Health and Senior Services.
Okay.
It is very possible we may get no medical marijuana facilities.
Define a normal sense of smell.
I would have to defer to someone on what normal sense of smell means, I'm not sure I know what you're.
There is ventilation required, it says, no odor shall be detectable by a person with a normal sense of smell. So, if someone reports it, are they automatically labeled as an abnormal smeller?
Well, I, I, I thank you for that question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I know that that came up at our meeting at Mark in January, because marijuana does have a distinct odor for those who are familiar with it, I have no personal knowledge of that, but I've been told that it has a distinct odor. Uh, there have been, it's my understanding, there have actually been court cases in Colorado when, like renters in an enclosed, like an apartment facility, and one says, oh my goodness, this is horrid. And I, not being an attorney, I can't recall what the decision that case was, but that's my knowledge of the odor issue.
Okay. Well.
There's no order, odor in producing it, right? I mean, in your, putting it in bags or, whatever they do.
You're asking a Baptist minister. He has no knowledge of this whatsoever.
Asking the general room of people who know nothing about this.
I'm not answering that question.
We're all on TV, so I don't think you're gonna get an answer to that question, but I understand that the ventilation means it's venting it out into the atmosphere, so I just, I don't know, it's kind of tongue-in-cheek really ask that question, I mean, I, I don't know if there's carbon filters required, or, you know, activated charcoal or something like that, uh?
I think the chair is, is leading the presenter.
Yeah.
Thank you, God bless you, Mr. Commissioner.
Now Billy, this is a, this is a landmark thing right here. It's gonna change the character, if not the disposition, of independents. So, I'm just, I was just asking, I, I really, I guess my, my, get sort of serious for a second, I guess my question again, could you state again, not that I anticipate that we're gonna have any issues, but if we do, that it's a state issue mostly, so the city has very limited things that they could or couldn't do, unless the, this place is actually breaking the law.
Correct, um, and that would probably be a, a legal question, but I can just speak generally to that. It is mostly a state issue, they will give guidance to local police departments under Amendment Two to sort of assist them, because I think they understand, um, this is a new industry, and there's gonna be kind of bumps along the way as we go along, we kind of learn this all together.
Sure.
Um, having talked to some attorneys, I think there will probably be some minor tweaks to our ordinances, but they will be more along the lines of conforming with what's in Amendment Two, and what are in the draft rules from the Department of Health and Senior, they're, they're allowed to do the inspections, we cannot inspect any facility, I mean, it is, this amendment was drafted by folks who drafted the amendment, or the medical marijuana initiatives in Colorado and Oregon, and they've been through court challenges, so they were very smart and new. And also, some folks who are particularly stupid here in Missouri drafted this and were behind this, so I would say, it's, it's, it's really a ninety-nine percent state issue, to be honest with you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we, we do have local ordinances that may speak to this, or we may be allowed to tweak them, um, like driving under the influence, for example. I mean, we can do things of that nature, add that to the, and that may be more of a, again, more of a state issue, but we may be able to take care of some local issues ourselves, yeah, but I know that we'll be in constant contact with the Department of Health and Senior Services, I know Police Chief Halsey has been in contact with local jurisdictions, including North Kansas City, who we modeled this amendment after tonight, and he's been in touch with his, uh, well, law enforcement folks, and they've had DHSS come in and meet with their meetings. So I think Chief Halsey is pretty on top of this, and, you know, we'll do the best we can, what we have to deal with.
And so they'd have to apply for business licenses, just like any other?
That's under what we proposed, yes.
Okay.
But they'd have to be licensed by the state first.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions?
Can the city then limit the business licenses for the city, like they do some other things?
Well, I think the Department of Health and Senior Services will do that for us, to be quite honest with you, because if you don't have a state license, it doesn't really matter. And there's only gonna be twenty-four per congressional district, and I can tell you that City of Kansas City, Missouri is on the record, their, one of their assistant city managers has said, they're gonna be very aggressive in pursuing medical marijuana dispensaries in particular to Kansas City. There are only twenty-four allowed in the entire fifth congressional, that includes most of Jackson, a little sliver of Clay, and all of Lafayette, Celine, and Ray counties. So, I think that DHSS will probably take care of that problem for us, more like, more than likely.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. And this is a public hearing, correct? All right, is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this UDO amendment? Is there anyone here who is supposed to ask questions? Okay, nobody's getting up, so the public hearing portion is closed. Yes, sir, I am.
In a matter of case number one nine dash one seven five dash zero two, Unified Development Ordinance, Amendment Number Thirty-eight, Medical Marijuana Facilities, I move that the proposed amendment be adopted.
I second.
Moved and seconded.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes, case number one nine dash one seven five dash zero two, Unified Development Ordinance, Amendment Number Thirty-eight, Medical Marijuana Facilities has been approved. Does this go to council?
Yeah, in about three weeks, something like that.
Okay. Uh, the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of April twenty-third, twenty-nineteen. If anybody has any changes, comments, speak now. Otherwise, these minutes will stand approved as written. Anything we need to know, anything you wanna tell us?
I believe our next Planning Commission meeting is June eleventh, if I'm correct, so have a little break here.
Okay, great, thank you. Any items from the commissioners to staff or to us? Okay. We will stand adjourned at seven twenty-eight PM.